I've got a lot of call.
That's a real job, buddy.
It seems like we're busy anymore. What's going on? Uh oh. There you go. Good to see you. I just saw you. Yeah. Well, I didn't directly, but I hinted that we were gonna need some money. She already knows. She's already got something chirping in her ears.
She misbehaved when y'all sat her on the corner or?
Yeah. Yeah, tell me it's him.
I tried to drive so forward.
Yeah.
Everybody give me some. Biggest thing is you wouldn't think we'd get misplaced him, huh?
He's not lost. Late.
Yeah, those are nameplate. Phil Wilson, that is hilarious. I just had him put Willie on there. You ready?
We're ready, yeah.
Okay, it is actually nine oh one this time in our schedule for our weekly business meeting. If you'll all stand with me, Ken, you're doing the honors, I'm assuming.
Father, thank you today that you have given us the privilege and the opportunity of all of you in a person. We ask that today you will give us strength and wisdom to conduct the business of our county. We thank you for those who have been elected to leadership and those who are here who are willing to put in their understanding and their vision for our county. We ask Lord your blessing and direction. In Jesus' name, amen.
Call me in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jeff, looks like you have the honors.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the order of the agenda as presented.
Oh, second that?
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Now it's time for public comment. You have three minutes. It's not Q and A or debate session, just get up and make your comment. Give us, anybody signed up? Okay, anybody wish to speak? Anybody online wish to speak? Nope, okay, so we'll move on. Consent agenda.
Wait a minute. Yeah, there's.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, you're right. It's to you.
We're gonna make you wait.
Please make sure you guys introduce. Yeah, we wanted to put you at the end and make you suffer through this. Stand by the microphone if you would, yeah, because it's a.
You have to turn it on.
Make sure you introduce yourself for the record.
Thank you, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. My name is Leila Kral. I'm the Administrator of the Local Highway Technical Assistance Council, or LTAC. Through LTAC, we provide training and technical assistance to all local highway jurisdictions in the state, so all cities, counties with Roden Bridge and highway districts. Part of the LTAC Center is our T2 Training Center, and that's what I'm here for today, is to recognize some Bonner County employees for the achievements they've made in training. We have two levels of recognition within our program. While all roadway employees or local employees are eligible to take our classes, the classes cover safety, professional development, and then a large chunk of them are for maintenance and roadway construction. But again, we do have two levels of recognition within the program. The first is the Road Scholar. To achieve that level, an employee takes eight courses, ten, eight to 10 courses, about 80 hours of instruction. The, again, the courses cover that wide variety of topics, but getting them ready for that kind of entry level or base level of roadway employee. First, we have John Kemp receiving his award. Here, oh, he'll receive a certificate, a hat, and a Leatherman tool inscribed with T2 Road Scholar. After the Road Scholar, employees are encouraged to continue on with their training, and we have a Roadmaster program. Again, another 80 or so hours of instruction. The Roadmaster is definitely more technical, there's more math. Most of those classes have an exam that require an 80% to pass, so I always say we don't want bodies in seats, just like you don't want to send your employees away. So the goal really is for them to be learning something, gathering something from the class, and bringing it back to the county. When an employee reaches the level of Roadmaster, they receive a certificate and then, will you be my Vanna? And a jacket, a Carhartt jacket inscribed with LTAC T2 Roadmaster.
Can you introduce your partner too as well?
Oh, thank you.
Not that everybody.
Which I can't believe there's a single person. Susan Keber works for LTAC up in North Idaho as our communications specialist liaison for local agencies. So Susan is helping me today.
Good to see you, Susan.
So first, four employees will be receiving their Roadmaster today for Bonner County. First, we have Kevin Stockton.
Kevin, we roughly wear the same size jacket.
Good job, Kevin.
Actually, I think it's closer to my size.
Yeah, probably. You still do that together.
I need the certificate. Matt Tolbert.
Matt, congratulations.
It's your hard work.
And they come in hunting colors, elk brown and bear black.
James Ennis.
James, congratulations, man. Thanks.
James, it's your hard work.
And a familiar face today, John Kemp.
That was it.
Jason, you got one of these jackets floating around somewhere in your closet?
Oh, yeah, Jason's got one. Congratulations, thank you.
Thanks again.
You have, Matt, you have a tier.
Taking advantage.
Both Jason Top and Matt Mulder have been Roadmasters, and Jason actually sits on our T2 Advisory Board, so he helps direct the courses or the direction we take in the T2 Center as we add things to the program. We do actually have another level of recognition, though it's not as technical, roadway technical or maintenance-based, as the Road Scholar and Roadmaster. It's a leadership program, so it's really open for all employees. We have a lot of highway district clerks who are taking the courses. It's new, so we're about five classes into rolling out that program, but we do have those available every year. If there are ever requests for training, you know, I would ask you to work through these guys and get me those requests. We're happy to add new classes to the program, bring in experts that we may not have, and provide that class up here for your folks. Our goal with the center is to have all employees doing the right thing, the right way every time, getting more value out of every dollar you're investing into the roads. Any questions for me while I'm here?
No, we've always been huge supporters of the program. We think that the better educated our people are, the more efficient and proficient they're gonna be, and the safer they're gonna be. And when people think about safety, we always worry about the person getting hurt, but it also ends up costing taxpayers money when you don't have an employee that can work, you have a piece of equipment that's in a ditch somewhere. So these kind of programs, I think, are essential to the county, and I think we have the best road and bridge department probably in all of North Idaho, maybe state. And I'll say that to even aid a county.
Second.
I would actually agree, so. Don't put that in the minutes, but.
That is, by the way, part of the record now, so.
I've always been very impressed.
And we will be disseminating it to every county and state, so.
Worked with a lot of your team through different transitions over the last 10 years, so I would agree. They definitely do their best to advocate for the county.
Yep.
I'll grab a picture out in the hallway of them. They'll be in our next newsletter, so when that comes through, make sure you post it. Post it around the office.
Will do.
Thank you today.
All righty, thank you. Okay, now we can move on to consent agenda.
All right. Where do you want to let them get out of here?
No, we'll keep them. Chairman, based on information before us, I move to.
Oh, you're gonna say.
Consent agenda as presented.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? Maureen has her hand up online. You light up, Maureen.
Good to see you, Leila.
Maureen, can you hear us? Are you unmuted on your end?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Okay, we can hear you now. If you need to speak up or get closer to your mic.
Okay, I just wanted to commend Jeff Conley for asking for the closer examination on January 18th of Darcy Smith's request for the fund grant application, and I just wanted to ask for closer examination of where the RV, RVs really will be parking. And Doug did have a request for the five, for a better explanation of the 5K.
Maureen, we really can't hear you.
A better explanation of the 5K.
Oh, over 5K? Okay, I got that part. Let's see, we have Sheriff. Seventy six hundred dollars for animal control. Right, we have another one that's confidential for eighty seven thirty six, another one that's twelve thousand, another one that's fourteen thousand Idaho State Police, and another one that's confidential at fifty six hundred, and then Roden Bridge, we've got Sweeper Rental at ninety nine hundred, Brune Bristol for sweepers fifteen thousand. I don't know what three Eno's Arrow one hundred GNSS kits are. Okay. Okay, so those are eighty nine ninety, or eighty nine eighty five, and then Bulk Geo Textile Fabric at twelve thousand, and last but not least, we have EMS. The, uh, how's that name? Lar- Larigo Scop- I don't know, Jeff, Jeff, nevermind. It's eighty eight thousand. Yeah. It's L R Y N G O S C O P E S. They're, yeah, they're for your, you know, the thing you stick down your throat.
Get all that, Maureen. I'll have to come in and ask somebody about what exactly that last one is, and obviously was a mic.
I know there are the things that you shove down your throat, because it's, the L Y N is, yeah.
Okay, did you hear my comment on asking for closer examination where the RV will be parking?
We have, we applied for the grant, and that's where we're at right now, so I guess it would probably make more sense to wait to see if it was even awarded to us before we worry about. If you have some certain questions after, if it, before we approve it and take it.
Yeah, it'll come back to us if we, if we're awarded the grant, that'll come back before us.
Okay, I just appreciated that Jeff said we need to look closer at where this is. Thank you.
Oh, I know where it is.
All righty, Jim.
Yeah, it sound like, sounded like you mentioned that the sheriff's asking for money but not willing to say what it's for, something confidential.
Yeah, there's certain IT items that we don't disclose because of all the hacking that's been going on with public entities.
Okay, I believe though, however, if the sheriff's asking for money.
Products we're using, they might know how to get into them or something, so.
Yeah. Still, I believe that if the sheriff is asking for money, he needs to explain what that money is for. It cannot be confidential. He's spending taxpayer money. We should not be giving the sheriff money without knowing what it is for. So I would hope you would vote against giving him money for anything that's confidential without him disclosing it.
Well, he has disclosed it to us.
We can see what it is, but.
The public hasn't, and it's public money, so the sheriff should not get money unless the public knows what he is spending their money on.
This is just public, where are we at here? Are we, are we talking about?
Technology items.
Right, so we, this is a longstanding practice, Mr. Lady, if I'm pronouncing your last name correctly, that we are allowed to exempt certain public records from disclosure, and there are many bases for that. One of them are these IT security sensitive contracts and purchases that we choose not to disclose under that exception because we do not want to risk our IT infrastructure.
First.
This is a process.
First, going by, this is how we've always done it, is not acceptable. We don't do that. Second, you have a right to not disclose certain information, but you cannot keep all information confidential. You're gonna have to explain a little bit of it. Maybe you won't say what the vendor is, that's fine. But you cannot give money to somebody that is taxpayer money without disclosing what that is. There's a lot of room for abuse for that.
Well, I can, I can.
I don't know what that's for.
I won't tell you the name of the vendor, but I will tell you what it is. So the eighty seven hundred is Flex Remote Migration. The twelve thousand three forty five is Electrical Engineering Services, and the fifty six hundred is a software subscription renewal.
Sir, this is.
You know, I apologize. I could have, I actually could have said that. I just can't say the name of it.
And reasonable minds can disagree as to how we interpret what is appropriate to withhold and what is not. This has been vetted by our, by the Prosecutor's Office, me and others, and we approve it. If you disagree with that or think that we're doing it incorrectly, you're free to file a open meeting violation or any other decision that you would think is appropriate, and I, well, you're free to do that, but this has been vetted by my office and we approve this process.
Right, but remember, it is taxpayer money, and even if it's vetted by your office, doesn't mean we have to trust you either. We do have some things that you do owe to us, and so I just want to make that clear.
And if that's the way you feel, then you, you have every, you can exercise your legal rights as you see fit.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thanks, Jim. Okay, so, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving along to Clerk, Mike.
Morning, everybody. Morning, Commissioners. Before you, I have Claims Batch Number Nine and the amount of five hundred seventy seven thousand one hundred fifty five dollars and thirty two cents, and Demand Batch Number Nine and the amount of sixty six thousand fifty one dollars and twenty one cents, totaling six hundred forty three thousand two hundred six dollars and fifty three cents for your approval.
Chairman, I move to approve payment of FY twenty two claims and demands in batch number nine totaling six hundred forty three thousand two hundred six dollars fifty three cents.
Second that?
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? None? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
All right, thank you. Next, I have EMS Claims Batch Number Nine and the amount of twenty seven thousand one hundred ninety five dollars and forty two cents, and Demand Batch Number Nine and the amount of two hundred ten thousand six hundred ninety five dollars and forty one cents, totaling two hundred thirty seven thousand eight hundred ninety dollars and eighty three cents for your.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, I move to approve payment of FY twenty two EMS Claims and Demands in batch number nine totaling two hundred thirty seven thousand eight hundred ninety dollars and eighty three cents.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? Maureen, please try to speak up.
There you go.
It's me. The EMS dollars is considerably larger than usual, is gonna get some explanation, and also is any of that EMS money from the federal government's COVID fund thing?
ARPA?
It is. We're not spending anything from ARPA today.
Yeah, what's on here, Doug, is remember two weeks ago, we approved the ambulance remount?
Uh huh.
That bill's finally come through as a demand. It's a hundred and eighty seven thousand.
They picked it up.
Thank you. And the ARPA?
That's what threw it off. No, it's not ARPA.
Thank you much.
Good. All righty, any other question or comment? Done? All those in favor say aye.
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 Maureen's.
Well, okay. Yeah, that was, I think she.
All right.
Okay, moving on to EMS, Chief Lindsey.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
The, 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 uh, let's see, back up to the consent agenda item that you were trying to say, that's laryngoscope. That's the video laryngoscopes that we purchased back in October. They were just not coming through, so.
Okay.
Just let it suffer a little.
Yeah, I know. Hang in the breeze there. Laryngoscope, okay.
So the first item, we're moving money from last year's budget to this year's budget because of the ambulance that we ordered last year that we just picked up in January, so first item here is to move a hundred seventy six thousand seven hundred dollars from FY twenty one Budget Line Item nine 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 one eight dash nine three nine zero, which is Capital Vehicles, to FY twenty twenty two Budget Line nine 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 one eight dash nine three nine zero, which is Capital Vehicles. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, based on information for us, I motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty two dash ten to approve the transfer of one hundred seventy six thousand seven hundred dollars from FY twenty twenty one Budget Line item nine 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 one eight nine three nine zero, Capital Vehicles, to FY two thousand twenty two Budget Line nine 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 one eight dash nine three ninety, Capital Vehicles, to pay for the ambulance remounting.
Second that?
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Move along, Jeff, to add in two.
All right, next item is in regards to our records retention schedule. This is Idaho Code thirty one dash eight seventy one requires counties to maintain a records retention schedule for each of its departments. Retention schedules classified documents as permanent, semi-permanent, and temporary for the purpose of retention periods and subsequent destruction of records. Bonner County EMS is presenting a retention schedule which has been approved by our Prosecutor's Office.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
All right, Mr. Chairman, based on the information provided, I move to approve Resolution Number twenty two dash eleven, creating an EMS records retention schedule pursuant to Idaho Code three one dash eight seven one.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment?
Jim, I could give you, you guys, just a bit of background on this if you care.
No, we don't.
You don't.
No, just kidding.
So this was, the reason we, we brought this to you guys for your consideration was that there were some old paper documents that were in a, I think they were being stored in a place that typically has like water damage and other issues like that, so we're trying to clear those out, and the discussion arose as to if we could get rid of those and how. We did determine that those actually have digital backups, and the code allows for us to just destroy those without a resolution if there is sufficient digital backups and storage. So we're not actually asking you for a resolution or permission to destroy any records today, but that discussion did kind of bring the, the topic of retention schedules up, and it wasn't a clear, well, we just had a thought it was time to upgrade that, that process. So this, this retention schedule is one that we essentially took from IAC, and they offer examples for different departments and the unique records that each department produces and how they should be categorized. So we just adopted that from them, and we're trying to make sure we streamline that process going forward.
I see.
What did I say? Yeah.
I said.
Yeah, yeah.
Idaho Association of.
Idaho Association of Counties for those who aren't familiar.
Yes, and thank you, Bill, for doing that. These records were being kept in our basement, which floods every year, so it just makes sense.
Okay, all right.
You made the motion already.
Sorry, I got lost. I got, you know. Our attorney starts talking and I just go, I'm just kidding.
La la.
Okay, any question or comment, further question or comment, now that my brain's back in gear here? So all those in favor say aye.
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 Somebody that wanted it.
Oh, does somebody want to talk? I don't see.
Oh, Maureen. Jeff did. No, I'm good.
He's done. Okay, let's move along to Roden Bridge. Who's up first?
I'll go first. Matt and I've got quite a bit of stuff on the agenda for today.
You.
I'm Jason Top, Director, Roden Bridge, for the record. First one I have before you is the Idaho Asphalt Hold Harmless Agreement. Roden Bridge Department recommends assigning of Idaho asphalt indemnification and hold harmless agreement. Bonner County employees frequent Idaho asphalt properties as well as using some of their equipment to load our oil products for seal coating and patching roads in Bonner County. Attached is the Idaho Asphalt Agreement and Certificate of Liability Insurance.
You're done. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the signing of Idaho Asphalt Incorporated, I, I indemnification and hold harmless agreement, thus allowing employees of Bonner County to frequent and use equipment to load oil products as necessary.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? Damn, did you have some? Oh, sorry. Okay. See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead, Jason.
So the next one, Bonner County has a excavator out in our District Two area that has around 10,000 hours of broken boom and engine issues that we're wanting to replace. So I saw three quotes out. One had an actual piggyback purchase, and it just happened to be the lowest price as well. So Bonner County is requesting permission to purchase one twenty twenty one Caterpillar three twenty three tracked excavator from Western Saints Cat for the sum of two hundred and forty nine thousand nine hundred and eighty seven dollars and forty cents. This purchase will be piggybacked from Sourcewell contract with Cat. Cat's contract number is zero three two one one nine dash cat. This purchase will be funded from our zero zero two ninety five twenty capital heavy equipment as an unobligated amount of five hundred and forty four thousand four.
Jason, will you explain for everyone else the piggyback?
So piggyback is where another purchase was made within the state that the county can actually just piggyback off of, so we can actually follow up with that purchase without going through the whole bidding process. It allows the county to go through that one.
That's pretty close. So this one, it's a close, this is a cooperative agreement, so the procurement statutes allow us to, the default rule over a certain threshold is to use competitive bidding. But there are exceptions to that rule. Sole source procurement is one of those. Another is piggybacking, another is cooperative purchasing agreements, and Sourcewell is a nationwide organization. It's a government nonprofit organization that solicits these types of contracts and then allows smaller jurisdictions to get involved in the cooperative, so it's essentially piggybacking just another, you know, by, by different means. And it allows us to not go through the competitive bidding process because we're confident that this organization has actually done this on a nationwide scale and been able to get the best price.
Yeah, what Sourcewell and some of these others do is they actually bid out, bid these things out prior to this and develop a menu of different products that they can operate at the lowest price found, so they meet the federal bid law requirements, sorry.
Plus, we went the extra distance, and I had Jason solicit a couple quotes from both John Deere and Oval. Just, I just sometimes get that anxiety that we're not getting the best price, so we did that, and they were by far the best price.
All right, entertain a motion.
All right, I move to approve the piggyback purchase of one Cat three twenty three excavator for the sum of two hundred forty nine thousand nine hundred eighty seven dollars and forty cents, and authorize Chairman to sign the equipment purchase agreements administratively.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. With Jason, item number three.
Turn me.
Is that gonna be Matt? Okay.
Matt Mulder, Staff Engineer for the Roden Bridge Department. So we opened bids for our crushed rock aggregate a couple weeks ago, as we do every year, and this is for a variety of crushed rock aggregates in various gradations as well as sand and BST rock and chips that we use for chip sealing. It's all the things that require rock crushing. We divide the county up into three different districts for our crushing contracts, and so first up here, we have District One. We had two bidders, Peak Sand and Gravel and Woods Crushing and Hauling both bid, and Woods Crushing and Hauling was the low bidder at six hundred forty thousand three hundred dollars. And the contracts allow us to adjust the quantities to meet our budget allocations, and so with bids being higher than what we had money in the budget, we are proposing to adjust some of these quantities on all three contracts in order to fit those budget constraints. In this case, reducing this contract down to five hundred seventy three thousand three hundred dollars by reducing the quantity of BST rock and our special half inch minus mix. So with that, we're recommending an award with these adjusted quantities to Woods Crushing and Hauling.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the adjusted quantities contract for two thousand twenty two Rock Crushing District One be awarded to Woods Sand and Gravel Incorporated for the unit prices listed on the bids of middle form for a total amount of five hundred and seventy three thousand three hundred dollars, and authorize the board to sign the contract.
That should be Woods Crushing and Hauling.
Okay, that's what.
My mistake.
Um, I'll amend that motion to say, award this to Woods. Um, I'll amend that motion to say, award this Woods Crushing and Hauling Incorporated.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? Seen none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion passes. Go ahead, Matt.
For District Two, doing the same thing, had the same two bidders and in this case, Peak Sand and Gravel was the low bidder with four hundred seventy three thousand, seventy five dollars. And we are proposing to adjust those quantities on the three quarter minus and the three eighths inch anti-skid traction sand in order to meet our budget constraints and awarding that to Peak Sand and Gravel.
I move that the adjusted quantities contract for twenty twenty two rock crushing District Two be awarded to Peak Sand and Gravel Incorporated for the unit prices listed on the bids in middle form for a total amount three hundred forty nine thousand, eight hundred twenty five dollars. And authorize the board to sign the contract.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, a motion to second. Any question or comment?
Dan, number four sand.
There's no number four sand on here. That's a longer, that's an old, longer story about sand specs and what bounces off the road and what sticks to the road. Yeah. Okay. Seen no question or comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Go ahead, Matt.
And then for District Three, again, the same two bidders and in this case, Peak Sand and Gravel was the low bidder at six hundred thirty two thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. And we are proposing to amend some of our quantities by reducing the three quarter and the special half inch minus mix to meet our budget requirements with the total being four hundred seventy two thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the adjusted quantities contract for two thousand twenty two rock crushing District Three be awarded to Peak Sand and Gravel Incorporated for the unit prices listed on the bids in middle form for a total of four hundred and seventy two thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and authorize the board to sign the contract. Second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Yeah, that's a pretty tight bidding, less than four thousand dollar difference on six hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Hey, any question or comment? Seen none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Go ahead, last item.
Last item is our bulk covert procurement purchase and we solicited quotes from six different vendors for annual bulk coverts. And the low quote ended up being from Consolidated Supply Incorporated and the amount of eighty seven thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars and seven cents. This is a sixty one percent increase in prices over last year's unit prices for coverts due to the rise in steel. And so once again, we find ourselves in excess of what we have budgeted and reducing these quantities down to meet our budget with the revised amount of fifty one thousand, seven hundred twenty nine dollars and thirty seven cents.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
I move award, I'll move to award the purchase of bulk coverage to Consolidated Supply Incorporated for the amount of fifty one thousand, seven hundred twenty nine dollars and thirty seven cents.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment on coverts? A lot of inflation. Seen none? All those in favor say aye.
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 Have a dramatic effect on what we can accomplish.
Yeah.
Looking at high rises in concrete and asphalt.
Yeah, let's go, Brandon. Okay. Moving on to airports. Dave Shook.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Dave.
I have one item before. Thank you for your time. I have one item for you today. That is a pay request in the amount of fifty four thousand, four, four hundred and fifty five dollars and thirty two cents to Northwest Grading. This is for materials that have been delivered to the airport already in anticipation of the Boyer Road relocation project. The project consists of relocating approximately six hundred linear feet of Boyer Road to move the paved roadway surface beyond the object free area for the runway twenty two at Sandpoint. Grant is part of the FAA's Airport Improvement Program, which is funded completely by user fees in the form of passenger fees on airline tickets and taxes on aviation fuels. The request is accompanied by a recommendation to pay from JDB engineers who are overseeing this project. I recommend agreeing to this amount.
Okay, thanks, Dave.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move that we pay the fifty four thousand, four hundred and fifty five dollars and thirty two cents requested as part of this grant and construction project.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any question or comment? Yeah.
Dan Rose for the record, the six hundred feet, is that?
It's more for them.
Is that six hundred feet north of the roundabout? Or where, where is it? Okay, so where would it be located on Boyer Road, south of the roundabout?
Everything south of the roundabout that goes by the runway there.
Okay.
Any other question or comment? Seen none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Last but not least, Solid Waste, Bob.
Morning Commissioners, by fire, Director of Solid Waste. Bonner County Solid Waste submitted a class action settlement claim form regarding, regarding emissions recall, recall for a two thousand fifteen Dodge Ram fifteen hundred in number one, C six, RR seven TM, one FS seven two four two one zero to Chrysler. In order to finalize the settlement, Bob Howard is listed as the authorized signer. We are requesting approval for Bob Howard, me to sign the documentation so that Bonner County may receive the settlement.
I like it when you refer to yourself in the third person. Bob Howard likes this, likes this memo.
Here I would confuse.
I know. It's for the, yeah, for the documents. Eve?
Alright, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move that the county allowed Bob Howard to sign the, our documentation so that Fiat Chrysler may finalize our settlement.
I'll second the motion and I've got a question.
Me too, because I got a two thousand fifteen.
I wish you would put the VIN number in the, in the actual motion because I didn't watch these guys reading.
Well, we're trying to be.
I don't know.
So we have another one of those though, right?
Jason drives it.
And?
I, I don't know. At the time, there was a different director driving that vehicle. I don't know what they.
So is it a fifteen also?
Yes.
Okay. Alright.
So why don't you get together with Jason and make him, have him, you guys get together and see what you can find out for that, that piece of equipment as well? Hey, any other questions? You want to see, you want to get your two thousand fifteen Dodge Ram?
But it's a gas.
See, that's why I drive Ford. Yeah. Okay, seen none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And it is, thanks, Bob. And it is nine thirty seven and we will go ahead and recess this meeting and come back in five minutes for executive sessions.